Hey Jennifer.
Hi Ken.
Hey, so when we get started, if you just want to do a slide that says, the board will be participating in two closed sessions. After each session they'll return here to conduct the open part of the meeting. And I'll just leave that slide up until we're done with both closed sessions. Even when we jump back in here and then I'll just stop the share after that.
Okay, um, so you probably have to assign me as the co-host.
Oh, I do.
Cause I signed in with my, yeah.
Yep.
Alright, so. Is that what you wanted to say or do you want it different?
Still coming up. That's fine, we can just keep that, yeah. And, you know, if you don't mind hanging out just till we start, and then I'll make an announcement that that's coming up. And then you can just put it up and then we'll go about our, our meeting.
Okay, and you don't need me to stay on after that?
I need you to stay logged in, but you don't need to stay on.
Correct, yep.
Yep. Hey, just about ready to get started here. Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Northfield Township Board of Trustees for February 9th, 2021. This evening, we're gonna have a variety of times where we're going to step in and out of the meeting. We're opening right now. This is the public portion of both the 6 o'clock closed special meeting and the 6:30 closed special meeting and the 7 o'clock meeting. So we will be going in and out of this meeting when we're going into closed session. With that being said, we are now called order at 6 o'clock and we'll now stand for the pledge, if you will please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all. Thank you everyone. I'll lead the invocation this evening. Dear Lord, we come to you this evening and we ask that you oversee the decisions that we make, Lord, that you be with us and help us to guide as leaders in our community and to keep in mind the constituents that we represent here in Northfield Township, amen. Okay. Next, I'm, we'll call on Ms. Manley for the roll call, please.
Here, here.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can now.
Jackie, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Moko.
Here, present, Northfield Township.
Kathy froze up again, there you go, now you're back Kathy.
Nelson.
Joshua Nelson, Northfield Township, Michigan, president.
Good enough, Zelenak.
Present, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Manley, here, Northfield Township, Washtenaw. Dignan.
Ken Dignan, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan, present. Alright, said everybody, alright, we have a full forum. Next is adopting the balance of the agenda, I don't have any changes. Seeing none others, would someone like to make that motion? Okay, I'll move to adopt the balance of the agenda, is there support?
Support.
Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Manley to adopt the balance of the agenda. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Supervisor, yes, I just have a question. What agenda are we adapting?
Uh, we are adopting the, we are adopting the 6 PM special meeting agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Yes, thank you.
Moko.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick.
Yes.
Think we lost you Kathy.
And I thought I saw her moving.
You might have to go turn your video off and it might help your connection.
Alright, Zelenak.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Uh. Last try.
Nelson, yes. Zelenak, go from there.
Okay, I got a yes from Moko. Otto.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Manley. Am I freezing or are they freezing?
You're freezing.
You're freezing.
I'm freezing, okay. Dignan.
Yes.
It is cold. Seven zero.
Alright. Alright, next is petitions and communications, hold on just a moment, I'm gonna let Ms. Limbaugh speak. Ms. Limbaugh, you are permitted to speak if you'd like to, here, I'll ask you to unmute. See. Lisa had her hand raised.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I had my hand raised since you first started the session because I just, I just don't know whether you want me in closed sessions and if so, what the login would be. So you can decide that later.
Everything is, everything that needs to be recorded by you Lisa will be recorded here in, in this session right here that'll go on from 6 until we're done tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You can stay here, thank you. Alright, if there's anyone else that would like to address the board at this time, this is the time for petitions and communications, our call to the public as it's known. Raise your hand and we will allow you to speak. Okay, at this time I don't see any participants that are raising their hands, so we'll move on. I don't have any comments, board member comments or clarification. Anyone else? Seeing none, okay, we'll move on. So the first item on the agenda is our closed session. I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15 dot 268H to receive attorney-client privileged communications exempt from disclosure by the state and federal statute.
I'll support.
So motion by Dignan, supported by Otto. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
I'll try. Otto.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Moko.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, excellent, and now if I could simply ask Ms. Carlisle to share the slide that says we're in closed session. Okay, for members of the public and we will be leaving this meeting and we will come back in when we are done with our first closed session to proceed with that agenda. Okay.
So, um, yes. Mr. Dignan, so we, we come up, we leave this meeting, correct? And then we join the 6 PM meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, we're gonna make this work.
Okay dokey.
Thanks, we'll see you there.
Alrighty, bye.
Jennifer, it's you, me and Lisa.
Jennifer, are you there still? Jennifer.
Sure. Jennifer stepped away.
I know, I just think she stepped away.
Okay.
Alright, well, we're gonna do this a little differently, alright. If anyone comes back and tell them to be patient, please. Thank you. Okay, we are back into the regular session, is everybody here? Great. We're gonna keep that banner up for those of you that are in attendance from the public. We're gonna keep that slide up because we are gonna be going into another closed session momentarily. Give me a moment here to take care of some business. Okay, sorry about that. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks. So now we are out of closed session, there are no actions that we are taking from this session, from this closed session. The next is announcements, which we have none, the next is petitions and communications from the public. If there's anyone in the public that would like to address the board, you can do so at this time. Just to let you know, this meeting will remain open as I said before. And we will proceed with the second agenda item, but if you have a question, please raise your hand. Ms. Prisge, Prisgen.
Hi, yes.
Did I get it right?
Yes, you did, thank you. Prisgen, 32, Drum Drive. I just wanted to, sorry, I just jumped on here, so prompt tonight. I wanted to just offer my support for Tallulah West, which the Land Preservation Committee is trying to get appointed tonight. And also just to let the board know that I would be on the line if there are any questions when the bylaws are reviewed.
Thank you, Ms. Prisgen, I appreciate it. Okay, anyone else in the public that would like to speak at this time, please raise your hand. Not seeing any, we'll move on. Are there any board member comments? Not seeing any, I'll make a motion to adjourn from our 6 PM special meeting. Is there support? Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Chick, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Chick.
Yes.
Otto. Otto.
She's muted.
Unmute Jackie.
Yes.
Thanks, Moko.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dignan.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, we are running a bit behind here folks, please bear with us. Alright, I will call to order the special meeting of the Northfield Township Board of Trustees for February 9th, 2021, originally scheduled for 6:30 at 7:06 PM, we'll commence, or we'll dispense with the invocation and pledge as we did that, the opening of this meeting. Next is simple roll call vote, please, or roll call, please.
I will second that, Ken.
Good, alright, Dignan.
Uh, yes.
Manley, yes. Zelenak.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Okay, next is adopting the balance of the agenda. I don't, there are no changes to the agenda. Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, is there support? Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Manley. Roll call, please.
Manley, yes. Zelenak.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay, uh, next is petitions and communications. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board, you can do so at this time by simply raising your hand and we will allow you to speak. I do not see anyone with their hand raised at this time, we'll, we'll move on. There are no board member comments or clarifications. Next item is a closed session, I'll make a motion that pursuant to MCL 15 dot 268A to consider the dismissal suspension or dis, or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against or to consider a periodic personal evaluation of or a, of a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent. Per the request of Mr. Steve Ains, this will be a closed session hearing.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by Dignan and supported by Manley. Mr. Ains, do you still desire for this to be a closed session?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Miss, okay, I did, Ms. Manley, will you please call the roll?
Yep. Otto.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Seven zero.
Okay, uh, we will not be leaving this meeting. Mr. Ains, I just emailed you a link to get into the, the other meeting because we had some technical difficulties. If you, I just wanna make sure you got that email.
Okay, I'll click out and see.
Alright, alright, it might take me a second to get the other one going, but I will see you guys there, okay? Thank you.
I'm in the meeting. Can you hear me?
You're in the wrong meeting Steve. You're back at the regular meeting.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll try again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey everybody. We'll make sure we get everybody back here.
I kept getting mixed up between different meetings.
No problem, I understand. We can hear you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, as we come out of, yeah, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. As we come out of a closed session, I'd like to make a motion. I move to amend the Township Manager's employment agreement as follows. Should Mr. Ains resign from his position, he shall be entitled to the severance amount referenced in paragraph nine, be as in boy of his employment agreement dated July 31st, 2017, contingent upon him entering into a severance agreement. Is there support?
No support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Manley. Roll call vote, please.
Alright, Manley, yes. Otto.
Yes.
Chick. Chick. Zelenak.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Dignan.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion, I move to amend the Township Manager's employment agreement as follows. Should Mr. Ains resign from his position, the board shall have the right to place him on paid administrative leave for the duration of his 30-day resignation period as set forth in paragraph nine of his employment agreement dated July 31st, 2017.
As support.
Motion by Dignan, support by Otto. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Chick.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto. Nelson.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay. And finally, I'll make a motion, I move to accept the resignation of Mr. Ains from his position as township. And finally, I'll make a motion. I move to accept the resignation of Mr. Ains from his position as Township Manager effective immediately and to place him on paid administrative leave for the period of 30 days, after which time he shall be entitled to the severance amount referenced in paragraph nine B of his employment agreement dated July 31st, 2017. If yet, as long as he executes the release and severance agreement. So motions are support, supported by Manley. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Check? Check? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Mr. Ains, we appreciate the time that you've served this community and we wish you well. Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on with the agenda, there are no announcements. Are there any petitions, communications, any members of the public that would like to address the board? If there are, please raise your hand. For the mem, there, okay, seeing none, the members of the public, if you're there, we will start our regular meeting once this meeting concludes. There are no board member comments or clarifications. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:43. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Manley. Uh, roll call, please.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Check?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven, seven zero.
Okay. Hang on just a moment and again, Mr. Ains, thank you for your, for your time and service here in the community and, uh, again, we wish you well. All right, sir. Oh, you're muted, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Oh, there you go. Oh. There you go.
Okay, try again. Uh, I've appreciated the opportunity to be here. I wish each of you, board members and the community well.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Give me just a second. Give me just one moment and we'll start our, our regular meeting here. So that take care of some housekeeping. Ms. Blau, I want to thank you for, uh, helping us today and, uh, I don't believe there, uh, that your services will be needed for the rest of the evening.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Thank you for letting me know. I appreciate that. Have a good meeting, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy.
Take care.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, or, Mr. Chair, can we have like a three-minute break?
Yeah, let's do that.
Can we do that?
Yeah, we will, we will, uh, be back, uh, really be back here in five minutes. So it's 7:45, let's, at 7:50, uh, we will unmute and, and re-video and start the next meeting, okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.